I know, right?
We're just gonna have to scratch it up. Dossie Overfield.
Why are, why are you here?
Oh, just, in case you guys get questions about our forward appointments.
Oh, okay, okay.
I just thought I'd come here. Hang on. I forget what everybody is trying to find what they sound like.
I'm waiting. Sorry. I told Susan that she can leave phone in South Carolina. So if you need it, we'll get it over.
Oh, gotcha, gotcha, I see. So it is my fault.
Yeah.
Now, that's all changed. Don't know if I'm going or not going.
If he comes back negative on their.
If it comes back positive for strep, we're gonna leave tomorrow. If it, if we don't, if it comes back negative for strep, we're gonna wait until. And then I gotta read, map everything. I might have to zoom in for the staff meeting. But.
You're gonna, you're gonna spend some time there?
I wasn't gonna spend much time there. Cause I've been looking right between. Meetings. But if I have to, if I have to zoom in, I might still. We're gonna stop in Nashville, Tennessee, his. Bucket list, go to the Johnny Cash Museum.
All right. I, I wouldn't say I used to bring it up quite a bit. But it's way, you know, it's a good thought. Water and, water from South Carolina.
I'll look at it.
And weather better normally once, once you get it on.
I'll be damned, I'll, I'll look at that. We're looking at taking seventy.
Yeah.
One problem on seventy.
Well, the only problem with that is, you know, mileage wise, maybe about the same.
But you've got weather problems. Yeah. All the way, look at it. Potential weather problem. Okay. Calling you original?
Already.
Okay. All right. We'll go ahead and convene. I'd like to leave this. And to the Republic, the which is saying. Wyoming Nation. In this law, we're gonna make you a justice for all. Morning, everybody.
Morning, Mr. Chairman.
Morning.
Welcome our new Commissioner, Scott Mangold. Congratulations on your.
Thank you.
To have you on board.
Hopefully, there's not a lot of eyebrows when I ask redundant questions, you guys are all good.
We don't get in there.
All right, first item on the agenda is election of officer. And we'll let the new chair. So, four votes.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we elect Commissioner Livingston as the chair. For second.
Let's go to the motion. All of in favor of Mr. Livingston being the new chair, play aye.
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 There you go, opposed. Congratulations, Dave. Hey, first, uh, thank you, guys. First, I guess, act as new chairman is, I wanna thank Joe. I mean, this has been one hell of a year. And, uh, he dug in there, hung in there, and got us through this year. And I just really appreciate it. Got, got COVID in the, in the, in the whole process.
All my co commissioners important things.
Got, uh, got beat up quite a bit on a lot of stuff, but hung in there and took this commission and this county through a really, really tough year. But I appreciate your help. So first act is, I guess, second would be entertain a motion for vice chair.
Mr. Chairman, if I could real quick, I'd like to also say thank you and hit the same thing. Joe, you didn't have a job. I mean, first budget and COVID and all and everything. And I, I know. The process is rotating the chair, and I would not want to be in your shoes with what you, what you. I have a, a whole nother respect for you. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I would like to nominate Dossie as, uh, as vice chair.
Got a motion. Motion and second, Dossie Overfield is vice chair. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Congratulations, Dossie.
Congratulations, Dossie, great. We're gonna move right into the board liaison appointments. Just for Commissioner Mangold's edification, we have a lot of different boards out there, entities, and we act, you know, as liaisons for them. If you go to your SharePoint, you're gonna have a list of, uh, of those appointments. And who's liaison for, for what right now? Now, I'm trying to find like, my list. I'm, uh. I'll jump right in the middle of it. I'm, I'm willing to stay with what, uh, what we have. Um, now I can't get my. Get it, what we have, other than I would, I would, I wouldn't mind moving off of shooting complex and fair board because of, when I was on the fair board, it was over Powell. And since then, I've moved back over here to Cody. But I would, I wouldn't mind moving off of those, but I wouldn't, and I wouldn't mind going on WCCA and Forward Cody. Since we have commercial, Commissioner Folkers.
If I could, I mean, as far as WCCA, I would suggest that you go ahead and take your position on our agenda.
Yep.
And you have a reason to be down south a little bit, cause that, that, that's a lot of travel.
It is, and I, I, I agree. I, I'm, I'm willing to take WCCA.
Okay. I agree with you.
Yes. And I'm willing to take Forward Cody unless somebody else is really hot on Forward Cody.
Well, if I could, my, my only question, Dossie, you're on the board.
Yeah.
I am, um, the situation was this, though. Jake Folkersen had a membership with Forward Cody through his business originally too. So we both sat on Forward Cody.
So.
You, I don't mind if you wanna take it, um, but I can talk to Corinne and see.
No, I just, I just thought we, and I was just going through the list real quick, and I was just picking up ones that, that Jake was gonna be making. If, if we don't need two on there, I have no desire to.
Find out for sure.
Yeah, they want to. I'll go in there.
Okay.
Commissioner Teal.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I, um, a lot of the, the ones that I'm on are, are once a year meet. So I mean, if, if it's all right, I, I would do the shooting complex.
Okay. Are you making notes, Susan? Great, thank you. Now I found it, I've got it popped up here, um. Commissioner.
The other one you mentioned was, well, it's fair. And you and I've kinda tag teamed that one for the last year or two. If you would be interested because it's in Powell.
Yeah.
You know, I can still tag team, it's on the around, but that would be helpful.
Okay. Um, we also need to fill Commissioner Folkersen's spot on health and wellness, the NERPA and the library board.
I've been doing the library board for the last year.
Okay. You, you've got a big plate full, or you. We also, we can't let him off the hook, I think.
Yeah, I would like to trade off library, I know that Jake was on that. As far as, yeah, you know, I'm in town too for. Probably not in part, that would be an easier party too. And also if, uh, somebody wants to move off of the Park and Rec Board, you know, Dossie's on that. I've worked with a lot of those people.
If you want that.
So, yeah.
Cause I'm on Chisholm, so.
I could do that.
So what do we have? Yes. Yes. Yeah, he's library.
Yeah, I'm switching.
He and Dossie are gonna continue to kind of.
Yeah.
Okay.
Tag teaming for a while.
Yeah.
So what do we have for Commissioner Mangold thus far?
Um, I have him on the library board on the Park and Rec Board.
Should be on fair board.
And, yeah.
On the fair board and Jake.
And then Peta as well?
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. So, and then we're gonna move Commissioner Teal on to Cody shooting complex. Okay. I'm going to WCCA. Um, health and wellness. You've got it covered.
It's a new thing, it's fairly easy.
Okay. And then the, the NERPA stuff, you wanna have anything to do with that, Lloyd? Or do we need?
Yeah, I can, Dossie, you gonna stay with that?
It doesn't matter.
I mean, is it a two-part deal? I mean, we, you know, we went to that trade, I need someone, yeah, I can, I can check that one.
Okay. Who's?
Who, Jake was that?
Jake, Jake was on.
Court supervised treatment.
Yeah.
It's about once a month. I think their meetings are at, they're daytime. I don't know which day Jake. But those are once a month, and sometimes the graduation ceremonies, and a couple of those, but not meetings.
Yeah. We need someone on there, I can, I can take that one.
Good, I'm, I'm certainly glad you're on here. I, I lost one, by the way.
Well, I gave up two, so I'll take that one. So that kinda got everything covered, Susan? We can clean it up later, if need be. Okay, we're just a little bit behind, we're doing okay. You've got the consent agenda in front of you. Entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moving to second to accept the consent agenda. We did get correction on the minutes, so it'll be okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Say, do we have the correction on the, the forms for the?
Landfill? The, uh, all those on the contract for the roll offs as far as it being, making sure the crandles are there. I'll make sure when I sign everything, that it's in there. Um, real quick, I'm gonna add one more thing to our agenda. This was brought forward by, uh, by Commissioner Tilden. I think it's a very worthwhile suggestion is, is to honor Senator Poe for his eight years as a county commissioner. Twenty-four, twenty-eight years as, as our Wyoming senator. Just if we, I guess I would entertain a motion to, to honor him in some way or.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make the motion to that. I think the way it's true, when we talk about, you wanna, is this on the agenda that?
I think it's an action item to move forward with it. Okay. That's what I presented.
Yeah, I would go ahead and make that motion. And I believe April twenty-eighth is his birthday.
Okay.
And so I would like the resolution to read when we. When Susan writes the resolution, to read that on April twenty-eighth, that will be Anko Day in Park County, Wyoming.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion on this?
Uh, I, I think we can get it on the platform. And as soon as we, as soon as they feel better, we'll get in there and make a presentation.
Sounds good. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All righty. Now, you're up. Next on the agenda, finding zone, oh, no. I thought. Oh, you're, okay. Um, our, our kind of simple subdivision this month, this isn't a public area, no. Deputy Director, Kim Billman.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is the final flat review for Ken's simple subdivision. The applicants are the Whitlocks and the Folgers. This property is in its zoning district, GR twenty, the planning area is Lower South Fork. We received the final flat application in December, oh, the payment and the final flat, we saw the final flat in figure one. And the applicants wish to subdivide and create a twenty point one-two acre lot and a twenty point one-four acre lot from existing forty point two-six acre parcel. This will be for residential use. We have classified this correctly, we believe, as a simple subdivision. And you did give chance to see the, the final flat, Mr. Chairman, on page two, that's figure one. And I'll just note that there were, as you saw, a whole list of easements of record, and our understanding is that list is complete. There is a lot of easements, but it required, or there were a lot of easements that were already existing. On page three, um, you see the property where the subdivision will be located, should the final flat be approved. And the location is, it's approximately forty-five miles southwest of Cody, and it's on the east side of Diamond Basin Road, which is also section U. In terms of neighborhood land use, we have a map on page, uh, or in figure three, that shows neighborhood land uses. Really mostly agricultural, some residential uses in the area. And there is a BLM piece to the, to the northeast. In terms of the site characteristics, as I mentioned, this is bordered by Diamond Basin Road. The land is currently vacant, it slopes gently in, in our estimation from southeast to northwest. There are irrigation districts on the property, and there is a private existing access along the north portion of the property that exists. Property, Mr. Chairman, to the east of this parcel. This property is not within one mile of the municipality, so municipal view is not required. This is a final flat review, and so a public hearing notice was not required. We've not received any public comments, Mr. Chairman. And, and I'll just briefly mention, um, some of the conditions that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended. And they recommended, first of all, approval of this at their meeting on October twentieth of last year. They recommended final plaque container notice of the Wyoming Right to Farm and Ranch Act. That is part of our regulation. We're, we're trying to be consistent now and have that be a condition. But even if it weren't, it still needs to be on the final flat. Condition that PNC recommended, number three, that evidence that, uh, this land is now included in Northwest Rural Water District boundaries, which it is. Um, in fact, that was approved, I believe, by you, the commissioners, late last year. Number four, condition recommended was that a response from Lakeview Irrigation District, um, approval of the water distribution plan. We didn't receive that, they have approved that. Also, another condition number five was that a approved long-term noxious reef management plan, be submitted to us, and of course, be approved by Mary. And that condition has been met. The final flat review committee met on December eighteenth, well, I should say they, they met remotely, Mr. Chairman. And we got comments that mostly honor before November eighteen. And then those minor corrections and changes were made, and then we received a, the final version of the final flat on December thirtieth of last year. All the submissions and documents for final platform review have been submitted. We have some findings that we identified, we have one condition that we recommend, and I'm hence, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, Mr. Chairman.
Any question?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to vote of the. Simple subdivision number two sixty-five as presented.
Is there a second? Moving to second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Kim. I guess you don't have to move very far.
Kim, do you need a rest? Do you need a number on that?
Yeah.
Number one.
Okay.
Pretty easy.
One.
Yes. And, and this, you're welcome, and I will, Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll make sure to have all the officers listed on, on the reservation. And have that correct. So.
Okay, next, we have. Park County Planning and Zoning Planner Two, Kim Billman, our simple subdivision final flat review.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the applicant for this subdivision is Jared Thompson. The zoning for this property, it's in general rule, Powell, the planning area is Cody, Powell Rule. We didn't receive an application for this simple subdivision. End of la, end of December of last year, quoted payment final flat, you see final flat in figure one. The applicant requests approval to create a two-lot simple subdivision. One lot will be two point one-seven acres, one lot will be two point four-four acres, both for residential use. And it is out of an existing, a current existing fifty-three point five-one acre parcel. So if this subdivision is approved, it will result in a forty-eight point nine acre remainder. We, again, we have classified this subdivision because it is two lots as a simple subdivision. The location of this proposed subdivision is, it's approximately, almost five miles southwest of Walston. Approximately one and a half miles northwest of the intersection, County Road nineteen and US Highway fourteen A. You can see that in figure two. And again, on, on page two and figure one, it's, it's a copy of the final flat. I did mention this is in GRP. Mr. Chairman, on page three, that first paragraph, the last sentence, I, I have their GR twenty, that should be GR. That's a mistake, I apologize. So this is in the GRP zoning district. These lot sizes as proposed are consistent with that zoning district. You can see in figure three, neighboring land uses. And it's really a mixture of agriculture, residential, residential vacant. And there is a subdivision just to the northeast of this property. And then a little bit to the east of this property, there's another two-lot simple subdivision. The characteristics of this property is that there, there are no existing structures. We have a map showing the topography, that's in figure four. And the reason we show that is because this property slopes somewhat sharply down as you go north to south. And on the north side of this property, it's County Lake thirteen and a half. So as you move south, it, it basically slopes deeply, uh, somewhat steeply as you move south. In terms of municipal view, this property is not within a mile of the municipality. Municipal view is not required. Public hearing notice is not required, but it's the final flat. We've not received any public comments for this subdivision. Again, we had planning and zoning reviewed this, that occurred on December fifteenth of last year, they recommended approval. Of course, they recommend, or they looked at the sketch plan. They had a number of conditions that they recommended be completed. I'll just briefly go through those. First of all, they wanted a domestic analysis done because that had not occurred yet. Since then, that has occurred, we didn't get the results. That analysis, um, confirmed or found the presence of hollow form. And so based on that, our recommendation was to have a note saying that on the final flat. And that has shown up on the final flat. A lot of times, we'll ask people if they want to do another water analysis. They neglected, or they declined to do that, so we recommended that note on the final flat. Number three was, um, Public Works had some concern about the width of the County Road right of way. That has been, um, arranged or confirmed to, I guess, the satisfaction of public's hopes. We also asked that stone sheet circle be shown on the final flat, which is a drive into that subdivision which is northeast. That has been done. We also asked for Public Works to basically tell us, um, that right-of-way permits are likely to be approved. Should the subdivision be approved, and the people wanna put in driveways, so we did receive that from Public Works. Again, Wyoming Right to Farm Act, we wanted that statement on the final flat. We had questions about a water distribution plan. We found out from Heart Mountain that there are no existing water rights on this property, therefore, a plan is not necessary. And we also asked the note be on the final flat, saying the engineered small wastewater systems may be required because of percolation, the percolation rates were slow. Based on the tests we received. Flat review committee, again, they met remotely. We asked them to submit us comments, all those comments were submitted to us honor before December twenty-eighth. Changes and corrections, to the extent they were needed, those occurred. We got then the final copy of the final flat on December thirtieth of last year. And we believe all the submissions and documents necessary for final platform review have been submitted. Again, we have some findings, we have a condition, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Would have any questions for Kim?
Mr. Chairman, I'm moving to approve.
Second.
Moving to second to approve. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Appreciate it. Well, we're moving ahead of schedule, but I think, uh, it might not be a bad thing, given the next thing we're gonna discuss. The discussion of the Community Charitable Relief Program. The state of Wyoming sent six hundred thousand dollars to Park County to distribute it to charitable organizations that meet all the requirements under the, under that grant. And so with the extension of, uh, of the care fund, and being able to spend the care funding, it puts us in a little better position to, uh, to move forward with that. Susan has created a, uh, a list of applicants thus far. And I guess my suggestion is going to be that we, uh, right now, today's meeting is to just kinda figure out how we wanna move forward.
Then like, the kind of, the good one question I have, I talked to somebody yesterday. You know, originally, this opened up only for reimbursement of funds expended to help people. And then once the extension was filed, now it's open up to lost donations through fundraiser events and those type of things. So we have notified all the applicants, if that's where it is.
Yeah, everybody that was providing in the beginning, I told them to go ahead and apply in case we did get that extension, and they did so, so they're all in here.
So they're now, they're now applying for reimbursement for loss of, of fund raised as well as actually expended.
And that will be known about the spreadsheet, we will see how they apply in each section.
And I saw, you know, I, I, I would, it was suggested to me that we have a, uh, we come up with some sort of rubric for determining this. And I think, you know, Susan's got a good start on that. Any suggestions on that right now?
Mr. Chairman, I just got a quick question, just thinking off the top of my head. Could that be Dean, Mr. Chairman, the story? I mean, there are all five oh one, three, three.
I, I don't know, I mean, we're charged, we're charged with, with, uh, we're charged with distributing this fund.
Right.
And I don't see anywhere in there that says we, you know, we're required, we're required, where they have to apply to us. It's, it's the same, they're applying for a grant. And, and we review all grants, and, and there's criteria that they, they need to meet. I mean, I guess I would have a hard time. Giving, you know, there's a lot of charitable organizations out there, but I'd have a hard time giving money to a charitable organization that isn't providing a direct, a direct, uh, relief to folks in need. And so I would, I would hope that I have the discretion as the governing body to administer this grant. To make a determination on, you know, is it, you know, how, what it means, does it mean, does it, if we have certain criteria it needs to meet, I think we're, I think we're well within our bounds. Dossie?
I'm fine with it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think also when you read through the, the stuff from the state, and, and what Susan's put on the, the rubric to start with, with the criteria. It's our obligation to make sure that they meet that because we can be held accountable for any funds. Any of these funds that we give to a charitable organization, if we get audited by the feds or the state and they come back and say, no, they really didn't meet that, we are liable. If we don't get that money back from them, then we're liable to pay it. So I think we have a, a responsibility to go through to make sure that we believe that what they are requesting, whether it is a fundraiser, fundraising failure type of thing because of COVID. Or equipment and, and needs that they had bought because of COVID, we are responsible to figure that out.
Yeah. Another suggestion I've thought about is if we wanted to buy. Divide up the applica, applications into, you know, how many we have, five by five, and, and every one of us take those six or whatever it comes out to. And those are the ones we individually deep dive into, and then bring our recommendation back to the, to the board of the poll. That's not, that's not saying that any one of us can't look at any of those, those applications, but for all of us to do, to give each thirty applications or forty applications. You know, the scrutiny that they, that they need, that can be a pretty daunting task, whereas if we, I take six, everyone else takes six, and we dive into them, we call each other with questions, we email with questions. It might, might help move it forward. Commissioner Mangold?
Um, are we, have we, for the, for the ask that have come in, uh, do we have enough money for all of them? Um, and is there a stipulation on the money? Do we have to spend it? What happens with the excess money? Do we give it back to the state, somebody else spend?
Which I, I was just gonna say, yeah, the way it's written, any of these funds we have to return by market.
So it's, your thoughts on that, Commissioner Overfield?
It looks like there's twenty-two viable applications. So it'd be three hundred and seventy-four for a piece of house.
I think we're probably gonna see more come in. Especially, we're, and that's something we need to discuss over here a little bit, is we extend the deadline, we need to come up with a, with a drop dead deadline for getting those applications. Commissioner Teal?
Well, that was my question, do we have, uh, do we have a set deadline?
Do we have, do we have a set deadline yet?
Not yet.
And, and, and so there could be, right now, I didn't do the exact map, but I think back to Commissioner Mangle, I, I think there's, we're, we're not even, probably somewhere around halfway right now. However, the other question I have for you is if we divide these up and do fifths or whatever, how deep do you want to go into? I mean, I've read through all of the applications, not, you know, word for word, but I mean, do we go deeper than their application? I mean, because you kind of have to go with what they provided us. They have to sign the bottom line, so to me, they're liable for making sure that what is on their application is true.
Well, and if, if, we might not need to just divide them up that way, but where I was going with all that is there might be something that's missing. If, you know, we look at that, and they're, they haven't provided their documentation that they are a five oh one C threeers or C nineteen. We can, we can make a note of that. And it's just any special, any special concern you might have, might have one of them. And I, I think that when we have been, when we've been put on the line for the dispersion of these funds and we are, as a county, liable if they're misspent, you know, I think we can go kind of as deep as we, as we like to, you know, we have some more questions for the applicant. And I'm just thinking, if we come back with a recommendation, you look at your five and you go, I, I think all of them are in good shape. Or this one, this one doesn't quite, doesn't quite, this is the concern that I have about it. I was just trying to divide it up so we didn't have to, all of us, pick apart every single one. You're more than welcome to, but that's just my thoughts.
Yeah, that's number one, I don't want to answer the question. Yeah, and we can discuss that with Brian when we have our executive session today. What our legal liability is and the extent of our vetting that we have to.
Yep.
And in my opinion, once the applicant signs, the application, they affirm all the information that they provided to be truthful. To me, that takes us off the, I don't know. That's a question I got to ask.
Not according to, not according to what I'm reading in there.
Yeah.
And, you know, I just don't want to, I don't want to be called the Wyoming Business Council of Park County.
No, I don't, I don't either, I don't either, but. And then the other thing as far as the schedule, I would like to suggest is I think we need to go ahead and do some additional advertising. And Susan, can, can we, maybe this is something you can find out, can we use this money for advertising?
No.
Okay, so this money's got to come out, our advertising, okay. I would suggest running ahead in the paper for two weeks. And closing the application deadline for January twenty-second, I think. Twenty-second, which is the third Friday?
So that is the form of the motion, yep.
Yeah, I'll, I'll put in a form of a motion.
So we got it.
Oh, second, I want a question.
Seconded, moved to seconded, further discussion?
Yeah, the only other discussion I would have, and this is selfish on my part, is I'm hoping to be gone the second and the third meeting, so February. So this has got to be done by the first of March. So if we, if we follow this, this timeframe, then that'll basically give us almost two weeks that we can do all of that if necessary and then act on it first week, first two things, but, but.
That was my question, I think the answer did, so the actual deadline from the state is March first.
Right.
To have, we have to be completed.
And I, I think moving, you know, faster than smoke or is a good thing if somebody's.
I agree.
Wouldn't hurt them to get the money in their account as soon as possible. So Susan, was it, the motion was to, to, or I guess calling, the motion was to extend the deadline to the twenty-second of January. And do two more weeks of advertising.
Advertising, new schedule with a new parameter. Because when this thing first happened, I mean, it was a scramble to try and get the order out there. And so.
Hey, moving second, further discussion on motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Both, motion carries. Yes, do we have anything else?
Yes, this chairman, a little misunderstood, they, might, some of these might not be a five oh one tree C. Can we eliminate those right away that aren't even qualified before we start distributing them?
Susan?
Mr. Chairman, I have been verifying with people that they are five oh ones. Everybody is getting the information, we have half-life that they hold because they do not qualify. So people, I'm trying to give them as much information for you guys, don't have to do this rambling in the end. So I will say I have been checking that as we come in.
Have they been, have they been, other than just saying they are, have they been all providing?
They have, they have. The only ones I haven't asked for is the ones that we're already doing special request funding from. Some of them are doing it, some of them are not, because we already have their EIN numbers.
Okay.
They're already set up in the system. And Steve and I are working closely to get this taken care of, so. But yes, everybody else is submitting them, and those that haven't, we are submitting them this week because our accounts were out. And they will get up to me this week.
Okay. Dossie?
Mr. Chairman, we also had a list of five oh one C threes as far as from the feds
Yes.
that she can check off against too. So give us a double check as to whether they're still registered that way.
And I, I don't see any problem with, you know, with reaching out to any of those, in those, those outfits. But granted, we're going to, we're going to advertise, but let's call, let's see. I don't know if you guys read the letter from, that Troy Thompson wrote about in Laramie County about all, when they started dispersing this, they, they were in a hurry, like all of us were, thinking they were against the end of the year deadline. And he was, they, they had charitable organizations saying, hey, here's another one to call, here's another one to visit with. If they need the money more than we do, you know, give it to them. So I think there's nothing against taking that list, and if you see someone on there you think should be, you know, give them, excuse me, give them a call. Joe?
Yeah, it also says that five oh one C nineteen gets, or I don't know what it's been acting.
Veterans organization?
Where?
Veterans organizations?
And then, yes, and we had two of them, neither one of them actually read the application to qualify, so they pulled.
They're pulling, okay.
Okay, Joe?
My question, Mr. Chairman, of the twenty-two, they're all legit?
Yeah, well, there's two of them in there, and I'll have you read just to verify.
So what's it, they're, they're in, they're in SharePoint.
They're in SharePoint, but.
What's it called?
So I'm really concerned about one of them, that's a very.
So your plan moving forward is you will update SharePoint, that downlist, yes?
Yes, right, if you guys, if you like, form them out.
So moving forward, Susan, if you just want to, just break, just break them all, you know, divide by five, and if there's an odd one out, give it, boy. But break it out, break out it into, you know, divided by five, and just let us know, send us which ones we're going to be, we're going to be looking at. Again, that doesn't preclude you from researching any that you might have questions about. You, we might miss one that someone else has information about, so. And then, and then as they come in with, I, I think we probably will have more come in after the
Oh, I'm, I'm.
After the advertising, put the word out there, do that there on, on Facebook and all that as well.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, yes, we had, I had three that went out yesterday because they had just returned from vacation and they've been asked. So word is still out there, and I'm glad people know that we are still looking at applications.
Oh, we're going to divide these into fifths right now?
Right now, and then.
Okay, and then as they come in, one of you and one of you, that's okay.
And again, they need to be, they, they need to all go to, go to everybody, but you can say, this is Commissioner Fields in his basket, and, but we all need to see, and we all will see, if you just keep paying attention to SharePoint, they're going to be, they're going to be popping up on SharePoint as they come in.
And then you, you know, then, once they, after the twenty-second is passed, then you will say, okay, these are always, these are go, these are not.
Well, I think we divide it right now and start, I don't, I think hit the ground running, let's start looking at them right now. I mean, there's nothing stopping you from, from looking at them, and, and then when we, as they come in, we'll, we'll be able to meet, we'll have more, we'll have a lot of information as the rest of them come in.
Okay, well, just absolutely, tell me your list, the ones on both of them.
Yep.
And Mr. Chairman, just one other point. In, in this, they're asking you to also report any care money you've already received and subtract it from that. So you'll see that in the application. The people that are applying have been very forthcoming with the care money they have received, and I have let people know that when I send the application to them, to make sure that they also include that in their application.
Also, what I'd like everyone to do is just take a look at that rubric. If they, you have any other suggestions on it, on, on, you know, questions or criteria, you know, send it forward to, to Susan, and it can be added to it. Great. Any further discussion on that? All right, well, next up, we have Park County Weed and Pest Board Appointments. We have board appointments for Park County Weed and Pest. We have four board members, four of the current board members, they all reapplied. Received no other applications. What's the board's place?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move and we approve the reappointment of all of them. And common board members of Park County.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on any of the appointments?
I just want to add, as liaison to Weed and Pest, I've worked with, been to a few of these meetings, and I've worked with every one of these guys, and they're phenomenal, the way they run their meetings and get things done. And I think they all deserve to be reappointed.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
I, both, motion carries.
Can I ask one question? Why is this board an appointment, the only one that has to have a petition of signatures to be nominated?
It's just the way that, it was the way that it was set up, and I believe that's via statute. Special District, I believe that's why it's. Good politician answer, I don't have the answer to that question, but I'll, I'll see what I can find out. American, 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 for Weed and Pest could probably.
It is by state statute. Okay, and I believe maybe Johnson gave some information yesterday regarding that. It is state statute, this is that they do have to get signatures from ten people within that area that they are represented. So you're absolutely.
Commissioner Mangle?
Is it up to us to determine if the signatures are correct or if they're actual real or not? Who determines that? I suppose it is us.
So that will be, that will be your first.
I've already screwed them out, I seem to be able to, yeah.
So I would, I would assume it would be ours, but, so, did we vote on that yet?
We did.
Yes, we did, okay, moving life right along. We, the Matiti Local Planning Committee, we put out an ask for members. We got Mary Dew, we got, Mary Rumsey was the only one that actually applied. We've gotten since then, we've had Joe Wagers reapplied, Sean Kristofferson has reapplied. And did you receive a, an application from Tiffany May? Okay, given that, I would like, I would like to go ahead and interview all of these, especially for Commissioner Mangle's application. Is, is, he, he doesn't know any of them, is to go ahead and set up an interview, if we can get that done on, on the last meeting of this month. So as I work for everybody.
Yep.
Okay. Great, well, way ahead of schedule with my first meeting.
You are, you're going to go to super dog.
Last, on the, on the public agenda, we have, get them in here. I saw a whole pile of road bridge of work. We're, is he not here yet? Okay, well, we can just thank, like. And for CJ and Leo, our exec session at the end of the day, there's not expected any, any decisions going to be made after that. It's an informational one. Unless you guys just like hanging out with us. Yeah. That's okay.
And I know you wanted to interview for, for Commissioner Mangle, but every one of these is reappointed.
No, Tiffany May is not.
Oh, no, she is.
Pull up the chair. I'll do it. All right, last, next on the agenda, we've got John Cherokee, was with Park County Wyoming as a mechanic for twenty-eight years. We sure like your service and your length of service. And it's the same, the meters is here, because I imagine that's probably the tough part of your job. But has it, it'll show our appreciation for your twenty-eight years. Present that to you.
I appreciate that, thanks.
Oh, we can turn here. Turning wrenches through the county for twenty-eight years, few things changed.
Yeah, I appreciate it, John.
Well, we're glad to have you there.
Yeah, this is well, will you go?
Oh, aye.
Great, yeah. You'll get it.
Yep.
Okay.
What's it a picture of?
Yeah.
Some Heart Mountain, they have them.
Chips of the profile.
Yep, see a little picture. Now you're probably bringing a busy man. Was that the shop he started? Yes, it's a job, that was the first job.
Yeah, you better, thank you.
Yes, you were. Yeah, I'd like to say something, say it real quick, since Rodney, you don't think Rodney's lost?
Yeah. He must have got lost. But he's, he's parked him up.
Yeah, that was his one job, was to get Johnny. I, I just like to say, you know, thank God, you know, I have known him as long as I'm like, six years now, but the one thing about Johnny that I think public would be interested in is someone calling a tight one. He's very brutal.
Economically efficient.
And, and you know, and I think he takes pride in that, and he has for many years.
Yeah.
Looking out for Johnny's money. You know, we had always had the money to do things in a certain way, but he's kept our equipment on the road. And, you know, I never had to worry about Johnny spending money unnecessarily. In most areas, we needed it, but someone needed it anyway. Ron, I was thinking.
Oh, that was you that was ringing his phone, huh?
I just want to thank you for, like I say, years, years of, years of service and, you know, does whatever we advance over the years. And, you know, no complaints, did I hear this one?
No.
And, yeah, he's been, he's been an asset, to be sorted it. Yeah, well, you missed it, but what you did was telling us the toughest part of his job was putting up the view for all the gear. Well, and I, I got to admit, in all the years that he's been with me, I'm going to miss it. Good. When I called him, whether it be midnight, or Saturday or Sunday, he was out to lunch with his friends. He was always there. I'm going to miss it more than anything. Well, again, we appreciate it, thank you very much.
Well, thank you, guys.
And don't out there and be retired. You're welcome.
I think the only thing I'd add to that is go forth and enjoy your retirement.
Yep.
After you get done with me, you got three more months.
He's been helping us with our transition.
Well, thank you. Well, there's a lot of knowledge in the shop in twenty-eight years.
Yeah. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, guys. Entertaining, moving to the executive session. But I moved and seconded, moved by Dossie, seconded by Joe.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Do you know if Brian's on his way down? We're, we're running our. Yep, if we're in executive session, it's me.